All right. We get it? Get it, get it, get it? Got it? All right.
Do, actually, I should probably pass some of those around. We're gonna use these.
I think it's the. Great.
Seven. Seven copies.
Okay.
So it's five thirty, we can start a meeting. We're putting you at the top of the agenda, if that's okay with you, as they get passed around. Do you want to introduce yourself to everybody?
Sure. Uh, my name is Alan Walther. I'm a partner with the money deal group. Um, and I'm here this afternoon to talk about the audit for the year ended December thirty first, two thousand twenty-two. And we'll just let, uh, the copies get distributed and then we'll, we'll jump right in.
Thanks.
All right. So, um, we completed our audit, um, June twenty-seventh. Uh, issue the, the hard copies are here today. The, the, the electronic versions will provide to join all the email. Um, so there's two.
Thank you for that.
You're, you're welcome. You're welcome. We try to save entries when we can. Uh, so there's two, there's two reports, a required communications letter, and then the audit financial statements. So the first that I would like to go through is the required communications letter. And then we'll jump into the, uh, audit financial statements. The, uh, so a required communications letter is exactly as title will indicate. It's required, uh, letter to the board, uh, of basically what our procedures are as, 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 uh, auditors and, um, results. So some of the highlights here, right in the center of the page, um, under the, the heading qualitative aspects of accounting practices. The important information here is the third sentence in that first paragraph, which reads, no new accounting policies were adopted in the application of existing policies was not changed during two thousand and twenty-two. Okay? So at least from an accounting standards wise, um, perspective for the, for the library, two thousand and twenty-two was an eventful year. At the bottom of the page, uh, are significant estimates affecting the financial statements. You think of financial statements as numbers. You think of numbers as exact, that's entirely true. There are some estimates, um, depreciable lives being most significant. So the property, the, the building, the equipment, um, is based on estimates of how long assets will, will be useful to the library. And then compensated absolute based on vacation days, rates of pay. So our role, um, with regard to estimates is to consider the factors and assumptions going into them and consider whether they are reasonable to the financial statements. And we did that, we believe that they are. Um, difficulties encountered from the audit. If we had any difficulties, we would need to report them to you. And we did not. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements. There are no uncorrected misstatements. And attachment A lists the adjustments that we did record, uh, to correct the financial statements primarily regarding the handling of, um, the library's investments, treasury bills, and capital projects. And we'll talk about that over. There were some adjustments needed to be made to, uh, to correct those. Uh, and then finally, with regard to this letter disagreements with management. If we had any disagreements with management with regard to application of accounting policies with regards to access to records, anything like that, we would, uh, have to report that. And we did not. Um, so unless there's any, any questions, we'll move on to the audit financial statements. And before I do move on, um, I think, I think I see Joy on the, on the screen.
Yeah, yeah.
Joy, thank you, Joy. Thank you, Paul.
Okay.
For all your assistance in the audit, that, you know, audit is a collaborative effort. We can't audit what you guys don't provide to us. And audit went, you know, from our perspective, it went very, very smoothly. So thank you very much. Uh, so let's, let's jump into the audit financial statements. Um, if you have the report in front of, in front of you, we'll take you with the table of contents. I'll walk through what is in the report that I'll jump in, um, correct the highlights are. Um, so the table contents, pages one through three is our independent hours report. Pages four through seven is the management discussion analysis. Pages eight through twenty-three are the financial statements and notes to the financial statements. Page twenty-four is, um, budget versus actual information with regard to the general fund. And then page twenty-five and twenty-six is that, um, our report on compliance and internal controls. It's important to remember that of this, um, twenty-eight page document, the pages that are ours, that are by the DLs are, um, one through three, the hours report, and then twenty-five through twenty-eight, the, um, hours report in the finance. Okay? The rest of documents, financial statements are yours, even though we assist in preparation, the library's financial statements, we, oh, we, um, audit them. Okay? If you don't have time to read the entire twenty, twenty-eight page document, read, um, pages four through seven, the management discussion analysis is a good overview of what happened during the year. It's written in relatively layman's terms. All right? So having said all that, if we go to page one, which is our independent audit report, the important information here is in the second paragraph, um, under the opinions section, which I will paraphrase, you know, our opinion, the financial statements present fairly the financial position of the library as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Okay? That is what we as auditors call an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that we can give on your financial statements. Okay? Pages four through, um, four through seven, I'm going to skip over in their entirety, the management's discussion analysis, the information that is in here. I'll kind of talk about as I, as I go to financial statements. But as I said previously, um, if you're not going to read all twenty-eight pages, please try to read those. Those give a good overview, um, of what happened during the year. So on page eight is the library's statement of net position. The library is required to present two sets of financial statements, government-wide financial statements, and then fund-level financial. Okay? So page eight is, um, the first government-wide financial statement. There's a state of net position and a statement activities. And what the difference is, um, between the government-wide financial statements and the fund-level financial statements and basically the fund-level financial statements, um, are accounted for using the modified pool method of accounting. Okay? Which is the same method of accounting used for your budget. So it's basically, um, you know, one year look at your finances based upon the budget, based upon the tax levy. Whereas the government-wide financial statements are full of cool. It brings in your long-term assets and it looks at, um, uh, liabilities and assets, um, that have survival beyond one year. Okay? Um, so the highlights here of your statement of net position, um, on page eight, your total assets are two point three million dollars, of which one point four million dollars is invested in capital assets and nine hundred thousand dollars is current assets. Your current assets are, um, predominantly cash of six hundred and eighty-four thousand and investments of two hundred and five thousand. The investments are, um, treasury bills. So those are, um, you know, a hundred percent government, uh, so very safe investments. Your total liabilities are a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, of which fifty thousand is current liabilities, which is accounts payable and accrued liabilities. And then your long-term liabilities total ninety-two thousand, which are compensated actions and some under revenue that will be earned in the future. And the accounting formula is assets minus liabilities brings you to total net position. So total net position is two million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, of which a hundred, or I'm sorry, one million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand is, um, invested in capital assets, right? That's your, your capital assets. Um, thirty-five hundred is restricted and seven hundred and fifty-four thousand is unrestricted. Okay? Um, page nine is your statement of activities. And what this shows, what this statement is meant to show, again, this is government-wide, what, what the, you know, the, what the library spends its money on. Okay? And then the sources of its revenue, how, you know, how those expenditures are financed. Okay? So the library's sole purpose is culture and recreation. So all the expenditures are classified as culture and recreation. Um, a million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, there was ninety-eight hundred and twenty-two dollars of, of charges for services. Um, two hundred and fourteen thousand approximately of capital grants. Um, and then, um, one million, two hundred and ninety thousand of general revenue, of which the vast majority of that was, um, property taxes, the tax on it. Okay? But again, that, those two financial statements are your government-wide financial statements, full accrual basis. Uh, and the next financial statement we'll look at are your one-level financial statements. The library has two funds, the general fund and the capital projects fund. Um, the general fund is your operating fund, right? So all the operations of the library run through the, through the, through the general fund. Your capital projects fund is, is exactly the name would entail used to, uh, report that the capital financing pieces. Um, so the highlights here in the general funds, total assets were one million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, um, again, of which, um, six hundred and eighty-four thousand is cash, two hundred and five thousand is investments, two hundred and fourteen thousand is due from other funds. That's amounts that's due from the, um, the capital projects funds. Um, the general fund has thirty-two thousand dollars from liabilities. That is predominantly payroll per year. Um, the financial or the, the accounting formula here is assets minus liabilities. It's your fund balance, your total fund balance at the end of December, um, two thousand and twenty-two, a million, eighty-two thousand dollars, of which, um, thirty-five hundred was restricted and, um, a million, seventy-eight thousand was unassigned. Okay? Um, with regard to the capital projects fund, the capital projects funds, um, I guess we kind of created that with you guys, with, you know, working with Joy and Paul to separate out the capital. So that's why you don't see any cash. It's really all the, all the, um, capital expenditures are paid for by the general fund, run through there just to segregate those capital expenditures. Uh, so the, 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 the capital projects fund is two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars liabilities, um, and two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars of the deficit fund balance. Okay? Eventually, the general fund will have to transfer money over once those projects are completed, once all the state data is collected and once you have a, you know, true understanding of exactly how much, um, needed, you will need to make a transfer over, okay? To make, to make the capital projects fund whole. Um, and then at the bottom of the page, there's a required reconciliation of how, um, you get from fund balance to net position. So it's really how we adjust modified or pool or pool. And it's really, uh, pretty easy when the library's case, we just add in your long-term assets, which are your capital assets, one point four million, and then, um, subtract out your compensated expenses, which are your, your long-term liabilities, uh, reporting a basket. Okay? Um, the next page, on page eleven, let's, um, ignore the general fund for now. We'll look at the general fund. There's a budget versus natural, um, schedule in the back, provides the same information versus the budgets, private, little, more meaningful. Capital projects fund, um, you took in two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of, um, state revenue, so various, um, um, state grants. You spent a hundred and thirteen thousand. Um, so you had a excess of a hundred thousand. So you actually ate away at your deficit. Your deficit at the beginning of the year was three hundred and eighty-three thousand, brings you down to two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar deficit. Um, at the end of the year. Okay? Uh, page twelve is the reciprocal of the reconciliation of, of the, uh, state of net assets. This is how we reconcile, um, state of revenue expenses to the state of activities. So you're just basically, uh, adjusting out long-term, uh, transactions, depreciation and capital, uh, transactions primarily. Pages thirteen through, I think it's twenty, twenty-three are the notes to the financial statements. As I said previously, there were no new accounting policies adopted in two thousand and twenty-two. Since there were no new accounting policies adopted, there were no new notes that were needed added. Um, so I'm not going to go through the notes in any detail. If you do read the notes, they describe the operations, um, and accounting policies of the library. They describe, um, your capital assets, they describe the investments that you have. They describe the retirement plans that you have. Um, I think those are the big, big disclosures, but, um, I'm going to skip over those. And then that brings us to, um, page twenty-four, which is the budget versus actual schedule for the general funds. So the highlights here, your total revenue budgeted for the year was a million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand. Your actual revenue was a million, four hundred thousand. So you're in a net favorable variance of, um, approximately fifteen thousand for your revenue side. On the expenditure side, you had budgeted a million, three eighty-six, um, to spend. So you had a, a balanced budget and you actually spent a million, um, three fifty. So you had a favorable variance of thirty-six thousand. So your net result versus, versus the budget, um, was that you did better than the budget by fifty thousand, seven eighty-three. Right? So the excess of revenues over expenditures, um, so good job, right? Very, very, really much, really much. You know, very positive on both sides. So, so budgeting was good, um, strong fund balance. The library is in very solid financial, um, shape. Uh, and then the last report that we have is the report on internal controls and, um, and on, um, compliance. With regard to compliance, we did not have any findings with regard to internal control. We did have a finding, um, which just basically pertains to, um, the fact that we had to do a relatively decent amount of, um, adjustments and accounting to assist you with getting the capital projects moved out of the general funds, into the capital projects funds, and with getting the account for, um, the investments corrected. Uh, so we worked with Joy and Paul to get that correct. The financial statements have been corrected, uh, for those who we, you know, we believe that the financial statements fairly present the, the, the finance position that it is in the year. The reason why there's finding is because if we didn't do the audit and we did make those adjustments, we don't think the financial statements would have been, uh, materially correct. It was the way that, that, that the, um, uh, investments in capital projects were, um, accounted for. But we, you know, we've, we've, we've spoken to Joy and Paul. We think going forward that the accounting should be okay for two thousand and twenty-three. We will follow up on the finding next year, you know, and, and report back. Um, so that is the, the extent of my comments. Unless there's, you know, we went through it pretty quickly, but I think I covered, you know, it's a pretty straightforward operation here. Uh, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Question is, we've had, have capital projects ongoing every year. So what is the problem this year? Did it roll strange or?
We created, we separated out the capital projects, I think, beginning in twenty-one, certainly in twenty-one, maybe back in twenty, just because of the significance of them and because they were not, um, they weren't budgeted for. If we had left them in, in the general fund, you would have a huge, you would show a huge deficit if they weren't budgeted for. So they, they really are supposed to be, um, accounted for separately. So, you know, again, we worked with Paul and Joy to separate them out.
I think we separated them out last year.
Was it twenty, was it twenty-one?
Yeah, for twenty-one, right? And then twenty-two was, yes, and then.
Uh, with, with, with. So it presents, I mean, I guess if you think of it this way, right? The, the general fund, you know, as I said previously, your operation, operating fund, right? You create a budget, um, and follow that budget. Within that budget, we're not capital projects. So if we had left that in there, twenty-one, twenty-two, would show massive, um, overspending in your budget. Um, so that's why, you know, again, in the future, when the capital project is done, there does need to be a transfer because there is a deficit over there, um, in the capital process fund. So there will be, there, there will need to be a future transfer to, 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 um, settle off, I guess, for lack of a better term, but they, they do, uh, general fund.
And then it's probably your, there's some findings that you need to explore further in order to understand how that process was done. Exactly.
Well, it's part of the, I, you know, so we went through, we looked at, we looked at, um, the grants and we looked at the expenditures and, you know, got everything where it was. And I think that, you know, the capital projects fund is accurate. There is, there are some continuing work to do. Once everything is completed, um, and once every, oh, you know, all the state revenue is claimed, then some sort of accounting, we'd be more than happy to, you know, to work with Joy and Paul to figure out, um, a transfer would just be made. You know, and really kind of be, it's going to be a bulk entry, really, if you think about it. Because the general fund has already paid the cash for everything. It's really just going to be an inter-funds transfer general to capital. So we have, for all, for all intents and purposes, I guess if we look at, you know, let's just assume that everything was complete right now. If you look back to page, um, ten, the general fund would transfer over two hundred and eighty-three thousand to the capital fund, right? To eliminate that deficit. So instead of having a million, eighty-two, a fund balance, you'll have seven ninety-eight.
So would it be fair to say that you're auditing on a calendar year basis? And the nature of our capital projects doesn't lend that's lend itself to calendar year based on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Dead on.
Thank you.
Yes. And then conversely, the general fund, because it's the budget and the tax levy, one hundred percent is the tax, right? The calendar year, once January first rolls over, the budget year, the tax levy. Yes. It's very, very well, very well, exactly, very well said. Any, any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Joy, but we said gave you all the adjustments, right? I think we're all.
Yes.
Same, okay.
Yes, thank you so much.
You've adjusted your point, your, your general ledger and that's it, so we're good. So, okay? Thank you. Stay cool.
Thank you very much.
The rest of your summer?
Thank you.
Your hair on a tushy?
Enjoy, try.
I think last year was just like this.
So we'll never go back to the top of our page of the agenda. I'm going to follow the agenda given the, the package as a follow. Um, public comment, is there any public comment out there?
I don't think there's any right now.
One, one, twice. Uh, treasures report and approval of expenditures.
So the finance committee recommends that the board approve the payment of the monthly expenses in the amount of fifty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty cents.
My second.
All those in favor?
Right?
Very.
Any other questions from anyone who wasn't here? On consent, consent agenda, which.
May I pull the administrative committee report on the consent agenda?
Yes, you absolutely may.
Yeah, that was all right. That's all the committee.
Um, so we now have approval of the minutes. Um, and in the president's report, there is no upper Hudson report. Do I have a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Well, then we might as well do, I don't know, is call report. Um, you want to go first?
Okay, folks. We have from our sample base of our review of the, of the director. I am sorry, it appears that some of you had problems opening what I, I did was just a copy paste for the results. I don't know if subsequently you got that today. Today's my work day, so I can't an- answer that.
Yeah, no, Joyce said that.
I would suggest that given the other things on this agenda and the difficulties we've had going to executive session, we consider a special session to review director's evaluation. I don't see anything at it that requires immediate action. But I, I suggest we review this and we can discuss when in the next month or six weeks, that is convenient for the majority.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
I, I do that question. I see that there were only six submissions. Is that correct?
I don't have it in front of me, so I can't tell you if it was six or seven, uh, based on certain counting it up on each question. It's possible someone didn't answer certain questions, but it certainly has been out there in their multiple remarks.
Some of the things since six, and, but if you add it, I was adding up to seven. So it's kind of like, well, I'm, but.
Edit where you look. Definitely some of them were seven, so I think somebody proposed, didn't respond to certain question.
Okay, I wondered because I thought I had made a comment that I haven't seen in the, in the results.
If you have a specific, um, for a question, I will, uh, see if Joy can find something where it might have eaten it, but.
Um, I'm looking at the paperwork now and it, it shows the responses like after the comments is what it says. So I'm not sure where you put your comment. It's showing some of them as six responses and then two comments. I think you just have to scroll down, um, I, I thought I did. Nowhere.
We can, you know, discuss this separately.
Okay, I also will say that knowing that later in this week, because that information is presented in two ways. One is the easy way. The other way is a horrendous Excel spreadsheet. The other way is a horrendous Excel spreadsheet. If you want to talk to me like. I can go try to look for in the Excel spreadsheet.
I thought I had put it at the the very end. Which might make it easier to to check them.
Because it does seem like a lot of the questions only had six responses.
Yep, that's what it shows. Um.
But there, you you said there are some that.
There are some that have said, yeah.
If you add up like. Pick number two, you know, value two, there is this, this, and if I add, of course, you know, I know, I make. Add it to the state, that's something seven to me.
Three and four makes seven.
Okay.
Yeah, I tried to try to get this out with plenty of time.
I'm not sure.
So everybody had a chance to respond. And we see some of them have seven.
Yeah, some of them have seven on them.
Yeah, and and maybe it's a, uh, some sort of failing in the actual system. Um if someone goes through it again and can't, hey, if. The originals are reviewed and there are. Statements made, comments made that haven't shown up in this, then we can add them. If there. If the document is reviewed and they don't seem to show up. Uh could we send comments? Back in later and have them added in?
I don't know how that works technically. We can probably just do it. String it as a word doc.
Okay.
Or discuss it at that time.
Is that? And that people?
Yes.
I mean, can we look at our own responses back?
No.
I think very good questions. I don't remember exactly what I responded to.
But we made it, we made it anonymous. I can try to see who responded. How I, um, I'll have to check on the settings, but we just kind of wanted it to be. Totally anonymous, so I didn't have it collect any emails.
Right. Okay. So, yeah, you know, maybe if I I've checked to see if something accidentally dropped off like a stitch.
Yeah.
And then if not, then we can add, maybe add something somehow.
Version that he's got printed out, but there is an excellent version and there might be something there, but. That takes a little more hunting.
Hmm, yeah, I'm not sure why it says six responses, because if you add the responses, they're seven, so.
So some are six also, so.
Okay.
Let's skip the. Some of the questions and.
Right.
I had checked to see what the average is with all of them, so.
Seems like there's more sixes than sevens.
And maybe that's why I rounded down to six.
And then when we get that done, or not when, but we can do a doodle.
So in this meeting, is it just board members or is ball, are you talking about? So we're never, we're never gonna meet together to talk about. The whole thing together before we talk to Paul?
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, I know what I'm asking.
Is that what you propose? Is that we meet separately before we talk to Paul? Yeah. So we're talking to meeting, okay.
I mean, it just seems like.
Okay.
We want it, don't we want to talk to him as a unit, not as each of us? Coming at it from our own perspective?
That seems good.
Great. I'm whatever that's on. You're okay with that, Joe?
I'm standing on calendar to schedule it and.
All right.
Are we talking, which day of the week? Do we have? Do we send an email out on canvas?
We'll get a doodle poll out or an email somehow on canvas. I like, you know, Tuesdays are no good, so no good. Um anybody else have a day that's really?
Tuesdays are good at four o'clock and that would accept a car.
Depends on the day, the day and the time.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Well, I'll try to get a, a reading from everybody and then see what. Give some people choices. And hopefully people will be available too, and we'll have to ask Brianna. And then Jerry. All right, so step one is um separate meeting. Step two with Paul. Okie dokie. All right, you.
Yes, I apologize, I had not been able to get the uh notes out from our last, our most recent ability meeting meeting. I was, I've been on work for weekends, so I apologize on that. And I didn't want to just rush something out without getting everyone's feedback before I shared out with them, so I. Anticipate this weekend that I will be able to get through it and share it out to each of you on the committee. Uh so we can reach consensus on it before it should open board. My apologies.
It happens. And I hope the project's going well. Get our audit review. Is there anything else before I launch your? Retirement update? Okay. Returnment of this.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah.
We um. Had a meeting after like six months, thank. Had a, we had a meeting. But then they told us that. We're in the system now, as of July first. Which was their original target date anyway. But we thought, since we hadn't heard from them, that that would be more. Formalities, but they weren't. So employees are now on the process of joining or not joining, depending on what they want to do. Um. We won't have a. Clear idea of our annual cost as a library. Until they have a revised list of people who are actually joined. Before they use our total. List um of all staff members, assuming that everybody's joined, which is not gonna be the case. So we will know more when we do have um. The results of, of, you know, people's decisions.
When it's, when we get those results.
But we're in the process right now.
Okay, how does that affect?
What the?
How does that affect our two thousand point four budget? Will we have those results in time?
It could be more, it could be less than what we had planned.
So when is our, what month this year's our last payment to TIAA craft?
And that could be less as well.
But what month?
What month is our last?
What month is our last TIAA craft payment?
Well, TIAA.
Yeah.
What month is our last payment?
We, as a library, would stop payments on this first.
Thank you. And is there a deadline for how soon employees have to sign up? Is there a window they have?
They want to see it this month.
So this, this month of July?
Yeah, we're working on it now. We want to see it right away.
Thank you.
You know, it's like. They didn't tell us anything and all of a sudden they want everything done now.
But um the people, the staff, the staff has um the option of joining. At, you know, before July first, the ones that are employed. And some of them may choose to join later, so that's also up in the air. But whoever's hired after July first is automatically, if they're full time enrolled.
Yeah, you can join later. You don't have to make that decision right now. But one thing is, if you do join. You can never change that decision.
Right.
So. Do we have, are we going to, since we had budgeted through December? For TIAA craft. That means August, September, October, November, December, we can segregate those funds. To help make up some of what we're going to owe the retirement system.
I thought we had budgeted to actually be in the retirement system.
Well, there's. You, you know, some of it has been a kind of a guess.
Okay.
You know, so. Going forward, but they suspect they told us that it'll be less than what they originally estimated. That's. Um, so in retirement, you have in your packet. The resolution that they need right away. And that resolution, what it does. Is it defines for us what's full time. So one day is seven hours, that's full time. So all of the titles you see are all listed as seven hours as full time. So if they see. And we report this every pay period to them. Uh luckily, our ADP knows how to do that. Because they do it for thousands of other employers, but um. If they see, for example, somebody at three hours or four hours. That just means they don't get credit for a whole day. They get credit for whatever that is. So. So this resolution really is just a resolution of what we already do. And then I guess we'll have.
Do you need a motion now to move that?
Yeah, we'll need.
You want to do it?
May make a motion that. Want to proceed to type up library. Provide standard workday resolution for employees RS two four one A. As listed in our packet with the standard workday of seven hours for the listed titles.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Did you say this is consistent with the practices that we've had over the past several years?
Past about fifty years. We, our full time is thirty five hours a week.
That's right.
Our full time is thirty five hours a week.
Thank you. And I'll say I've seen this resolution from in various other government entities at town and county level before. This is not new.
Yeah, most libraries are thirty five, thirty seven, well, pretty much.
Any other comments, questions? In that case, all in favor?
I.
And then, yes, we'll have Brianna sign that.
Okay.
But she's.
Will they do that every year to make sure that?
Okay.
Okay, that's that.
Yes, of course. Now again, you're on.
I'm on again.
Twenty four operating budget.
Oh boy. Okay, hold on, let me get to. Where I was going to. Oh, here we are. Um, okay, I, that is also in your packet, the actual budget. And you will see you have two columns, you'll have the twenty three budget, the current budget, and you can compare that with the twenty twenty four budget. Uh the twenty twenty four budget will require an eight point nine percent increase in revenue. From the library tax levy. This does not necessarily mean that the tax will increase by eight point nine percent. The actual level levy will depend on the total property value in the city, which the controller will figure out. What has to be loving. So as soon as we have a budget. We'll get that answer. Um. So moving along on the revenue portion. Um I just increased the fines and fees and the photocopies based on what we're seeing right now. So not much of a big deal. Um, I did. Um. Put a zero for fundraising. And I put an extra ten thousand from friends support in the revenue. So that's how that's resolved, um, if you. Yeah, okay. If you look at the revenue. You'll see that ninety four point thirty six percent of our budget is from the library's head. Um. Only about ninety five thousand and not. Um, going down to library books and materials. Um, we have talked about increasing that um several times and in several different committees. I did increase it here by, uh turns out to be thirteen point three nine percent. Uh to be one hundred and thirteen thousand two fifty six. Um, so it could be more. But um that's what I'm recommending at this point. Um, highlights on the facilities, of course, utility. Um utilities I increased by thirty six percent, again, based on what we're seeing. From. National grid. Um, so that'd be forty five thousand for gas and electric. For both locations. Um. I did increase um building repairs and and supplies, if not enough, but. It is some going in the right direction. Um. And that is facilities.
So there's security, there's fifteen thousand for security, Paul is.
Yeah, I did increase um IT support as well from twelve to fifteen thousand. Security was what I kept. Based on. Well. Possibilities, I guess.
Okay.
And I'm not saying that has to be a security person, that could be other security considerations. We've talked about, then we'll get to that later, but talk about additional cameras um in the building and outside. Um, outside is still kind of a problem, but. Um. So that could be.
Yeah, I get it. I took a nine hundred dollar bike last year with no camera on it.
Yeah, um, so. My, my one problem is. You can't put cameras on the building per se. Um, we could put them, one, one thing we figured out, we could put them on those big poster things. That we have, but then they're like a kind of a crystal arrangement. And then. They had the other one on this side figured way out the end. And I don't know what that's gonna look like when you're trying to get all the way down that street. Um, and those were, those were the possible three cameras. We have three slots available. Without purchasing another. Uh box, so. Anyway, I, I got some of the estimates and we're kind of mulling it over, but. Um, they have suggested three more cameras on the inside in places where. They can't see and they need to see, and they got, they make sense. So anyway, that was a long answer. Um.
We could use a fifteen for, that would take hard skate.
May, may I ask, I see a line for Lancenburg maintenance. Does that mean that all the other maintenance costs are then main branch? It is, I'm not sure.
Uh yeah, it, this is, that's a separate. Primarily, it's a cleaning service that goes over the Lancingburg.
So. The, so the twenty four K that is for the main branch. Whereas the five point five K that is for Lancenburg.
You know.
Thank you.
Sorry, that's something. Um. All right, moving on to salaries and benefits. Um salaries are basically increased. Um, so that um. We can implement the uh. Continue to implement the twenty twenty two salary schedule. Which calls for about a three percent increase uh first step. So it allows us to kind of everybody work additional staff next year. Next year, we probably have to take a look at our salary scheduling and. Just with them. Have to be quiet here. I still think that's what I'm advertising for library one at fifty eight thousand. We just went up to that.
They've seen it, you don't have to worry about it.
Anyway.
I think they all left, they're on their computers applying.
What a one percent increase. How many dollars equals a one, one more percent increase? In the budget?
It would be, uh, I guess, sixteen thousand.
Yeah. Eight thirty five.
Eight thirty four, eight thirty six.
Sixteen thousand, yeah. Eight, yeah, eight thirty six, right? But I don't know how that translates over into exactly um. What the overall percentage increase was, but.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. I I didn't cover all of salary, what happened. But anyway, the uh, with the big increase in salary and benefits particularly was. Franklin's comp, which was totally unexpected. And they they hit us this year. They did an audit, uh, and what they mean by an audit is they just look at our total. Payroll. And figure it out on that basis. So I had budget eleven thousand, um. Which is now increased to nineteen thousand.
And they looked at our payroll versus our claims history?
Just based on payroll, yeah. Which is a surprise to me, because I thought it was based on. What kind of industry you were in. I mean, we're not construction, you know?
Play factor to that also.
Okay, under operating, I was able to. Bump up um. Some equipment purchase, rental and maintenance. Um, a little bit, that's about all. And then the program budget, oh, by the way, this, your budget is not correct, yeah. It says two point five percent, the program budget I increased by twenty five percent. Um, the program budget is uh not everything that we do with programming, because quite a number of programs are supported by. Either the Friends Group or other smaller grants like Stewart's Grants and stuff like that. So that's all. Um, basically what our contribution is, you know, the library's contribution.
So we're going up to two point five, but there's other monies that are.
Twenty five percent. But the number, the number is correct in your, in your budget, it's just the percentage indication is incorrect.
Yeah. Oh, no, that it's twenty five percent. No, it's not two point. I just had my.
Thank you very much.
So I was gonna say that it the. Um, budget and amount looks low compared to what's being actually spent this year. And that's the reason, because there are actually. Other funds that come into it.
Yeah, that's what happens. You know, like I said, uh. The Breslin grant isn't included in any of the revenue. And that's fifteen thousand dollars. Um, so there's, yeah, several things like that.
So I shouldn't be concerned, I mean, we've already, according to. The income statement, we, for half the year, we've already spent sixty five hundred dollars on. Writers and speakers.
Yeah.
So.
But, you know, with, again, with the bills and that, some of it's actually coming from the friends.
Right.
Right, but that's what Paul said. That's what Paul said, yes.
It just doesn't show up.
Two programs that fully just gave me, I sent along to the friends as a request, uh, speakers. So, yeah.
I also. That um. Library books, library books and materials look kind of out of line with the expenditures. Also, now I know there's small amounts of money. But still, which um. Library books and materials.
What do you. So you're talking about this one hundred and thirteen thousand?
What was the question?
So, for instance, uh. I don't know how I, how much I can compare, but. It says main circulation, so the equivalent. Would look to be um circulating. Oh, sorry, that's not one that I I thought was discrepancy, so under reference. We've already expended. Of fifteen hundred dollars. And you're only budgeting twelve hundred for next year.
Yeah, the actual expenditures for reference have been going down because we don't keep the separate collection like we used to.
Right, but we've expended in half a year more than what you budgeted for next.
That's consistent, that's consistent with the budget, last year the budget had three thousand sixty dollars. Half that would be fifteen hundred, so I think that's consistent.
Right, but he's twelve hundred is proposed for.
That's correct, and that's what it shows here on the budget here.
I'm so I'm, I'm not sure, so that.
The budget shows a decrease from three thousand sixty dollars down to one thousand two hundred dollars.
Right, but we're spending, so we expect to spend less.
That's what we said, yes. Fifty two dollars and eighty cents, you're today in under reference.
Okay, I, this is not the, the income statement I ordinarily use, but. Okay, so I'm looking at the budget, okay. And name juvenile? Name juvenile?
Yeah.
Does that include both? May, so juvenile in the budget, does that include young adult and juvenile?
No. Young adult is separate.
Not. Where?
Next line down.
No, I know, on the actual, on the income statement, it's just.
On the income statement, it's mixed with circulating. The young adult.
But I gotta get my paperwork out here.
Okay.
Those my um. This, this is not exactly, doesn't look exactly like the budget. By the way.
Well, it's.
This is our actual software that we use. To report to you though. It's not, the categories are sometimes a little different.
As I say, they're, they're relatively small amounts of money.
Yeah, why a uh. Generally um comes out of adults on the. Report.
Audio visual. You're budgeting nine thousand nine hundred. And uh audio visual, we spent seven thousand in half a year. So I was just trying to look at what we've, we've spent versus. What's budgeted?
Yeah, we're um. Well, it's not that bad. Probably slow down.
Juvenile, we've spent three thousand dollars in half a year, and you're proposing a budget of uh. Fifteen thousand for next year.
Yeah, they need to spend more, but.
Yes, because.
You know, we. Look at the situation and. Here they have to throw out a book and order to order. I mean, literally, there's no space. So. But, yeah, they do need to. Order more.
Okay, so I just felt, you know, that. The uh. It was kind of out of sync with our expenditures, the number of the items in library books and materials.
Yeah, I think within the materials budget, I look at. These lines of suggestions, but I look at the total material budget. Is a. Another thing. So those things tend to move around a bit.
Um, the other thing is, we had talked about the possibility of including something. Toward the, that we could use for the, for the match. For our grants.
We did.
It might be useful to, even if we put in a small amount, to have people start thinking those terms that, that, you know. The tax money should be supporting.
Related to that. Was, were we going to do that? What I meant, as part of a, create a capital reserve account? And that is part of the reason I asked that previous question, what's one percent? Do we go one percent and do we go half a percent? Where is? How long we have to think about this to see where you're comfortable, but. We probably do have to find some way to have a line item there. Capitally for these matches. We may not be able to do. What we aspire to this year, but we probably should do something. At least get the line ahead of it.
Yes, I. I, I concur, and I would think it would be pretty easy to justify when you can say, hey, for this. Ten thousand dollars, we can get another ninety, you know, ninety thousand or another um. Thirty thousand, you know, you can show how it. It really.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I mean.
We do have to be cognizant of our ask last year in the support. And everybody, or most people. Have taken a bite in their budgets, not everybody had their personal, their family budgets. But this is important enough where. We need to get the line item in, even though we know that this year. It may not be adequate.
Well, I was hoping to say where I was originally more like in the six percent range. Right now, I'm at the eight point nine, but I kind of like eight point nine over nine something.
This, this is seven point two five.
That's the total increase.
Yes, that's not what we need as revenue.
The tax levy is talking about.
What we need for revenue.
It's eight point nine, it says right here, seven point two five percent, I don't know what you mean by. You're speaking Greek to me, so you've got to talk a little more slowly and explain it, because I don't understand.
There's a lot of revenue figures and a lot of expense figures. Uh, basically, this is eight point nine percent is that in taxes. In order to meet this budget.
It's the first line, the tax levy on the budget, it says uh, one point five, that's the eight point nine percent increase.
Which page we're on?
The first page of the budget, the very top.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I have it printed out.
Ken, if you want me to draw an air for you. Okay, our budget. Is a percentage. That we're reaching up over last year. We, the. You figure a tax increase, but the tax levy is also related to. How much?
Parking balance.
Yes, so you've got, you're looking at three. Stands in the graph.
I wonder if there's any question, though, you're talking about an operating budget. Adding a capital. Amount of money to an output in the budget. And this, you know, you have to raise that through taxes.
I can tell you that many school districts do it all the time.
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, I don't know.
For those who have a clue, do it. Those that don't suddenly find themselves. Holding their hand in the air when they need to replace the highway garage. We, we gotta, again, we gotta.
Yeah, that's what we.
No, it's not what we aspire to. But it's, again, this is part of, we gotta take the baby step.
We've got to plan for it.
Yeah, we gotta take the baby step.
But, you know, the baby.
Even if it's half a percent.
If you look at. Ten thousand dollars. Contemplating three projects right now at one point six million dollars.
Yeah.
And those are not, I mean, that doesn't even change hardly anything.
So it doesn't hurt to add to ten thousand dollars, it hardly changes anything, so it doesn't hurt to add that ten thousand dollars or that.
We know it's not enough.
I can throw it in there.
Yeah, we know it's not enough. But when. Good practice says we should have been doing, and we should do it.
I mean, is that what we want, ten dollars?
That's what I'm asking my fellow board.
You say one percent, that would keep us under the. Uh, when the tax, tax levy increase would go from, and I apologize, and I'm probably gonna get this wrong. What if we said that the tax levy increase instead being eight point nine into nine point nine percent? And that way you stay under the ten percent. And I know it's not the one percent of our total budget. So we're close to the.
And that further helps us in the, just by having capital reserve that may help us with some of the accounting. In auditing later, by having that option there. How much did we ask for last year? What was the increase? I don't remember, was it thirteen?
Six sixteen?
Yeah. So now we want to ask for nine. Last year, what was the tax levy increase?
Oh, yeah, that was around sixteen.
Yeah, and we don't, we really don't want to go that high, but we at least gotta make a baby step.
Yeah, we're, we're trying, yeah, we're trying not to do sixteen percent.
We don't want to go what we did last year, we can't get, I don't think we can get it through.
This is a political question for you guys.
Yeah, and I don't think we could get it through.
Just assume, you know, go sixteen percent every year. And I think it's gonna work.
I think it's useful to get in the budget and have the taxpayers start. Uh, thinking in those terms, supporting.
I think, I think a lot of our support, I mean, quite frankly, comes from people supporting this building.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what they're voting for.
I'm, I'm looking at that, that's, that's.
I mean.
Reason to then include something here that says we're taking care of this building.
I'm looking at the worst possible case of someone questioning our budget and saying. Now, why don't you have more in your capital reserves?
It's like, it's like they said in those meetings for the ARPA, that, well, why didn't you ask for more?
I, I still think we have to think, yes, people are. Supporting this building, but I think people are supporting us, the library, and what we do.
I agree.
And that's their bottom line, I don't go and think, I'm supporting the art building. I come and say.
I heard Paul say that, that wasn't me saying that.
Well, someone else said they're supporting the building, so I just, I don't think everyone's coming in voting I for a budget, just because. Supporting the building.
Yeah, I, a lot of my friends are.
What's done here.
But the fact is, the fact is, you're in a situation kind of like Atlas. We need a place to stand to be able to move the earth, and that's. Part of what the capital reserve account is meant to help you do. To fund that place to stand to move the earth. So the difference between eight point nine to nine point nine in the average person's tax bill, what is that?
We don't know, we don't know.
We have any idea? Like, a dollar, five dollars?
Something like that, you know, but.
One of the things we have to be, what people want is that. This building, this library system is never had. This building, this library system is never had. You endowments to fund necessary. Building work. Be it maintenance, be it improvements to make it. A more functional library, and because of that, we do need some kind of a capital reserve account. Even though we're being respectful of everyone's costs. We're not, this is not. The full hit. But this is a down payment on our community's future. This is providing a method to do this. Later, when the time is more beneficial.
Uh, I just have the question in terms again of how much we're talking about, but the other. Part of that question is, do you wanna take any of that from what I've added already? There's only one place you can do it. The built-in material.
So we need, and we're not doing any services.
Material is what the library does. It's our core mission. So I, I would advocate for increasing the tax levy by one percent. Of what we're showing here. Uh, and I hope I'm using the right terms, from eight point nine percent to a. Nine point nine percent increase and using those funds to be put into a capital reserve fund.
It will vary, I think we can sell this if we're there. To, the more educated, if we're very clear, why we're doing this, is we don't have a capital reserve account, we should have one. And we're trying to improve our housekeeping. And which protects their services and their financial future in taxes later.
And there's a big return.
I think we have a certainly a good argument, I mean, I don't see that that's a problem, um. It's just that. People don't always vote that way, I mean, you don't always vote. Sometimes only sees, oh, a ten percent increase, you know, or a nine percent increase, or whatever, I mean, that's all they see.
On last year, you know, inflation increased to eight percent. That was, I, I think that was for the year, so that figure probably came out after.
Yeah.
We would have done last year's budget.
Well, the inflation has hit us too, I mean, you know.
Right, but so, you know, there's.
That's more of an argument we can make, I mean, there's plenty of, so.
Plus the decision that the taxpayer has made to, to have us go into this retirement system.
Yeah.
So do we go one percent, do we go half a percent, but we, we gotta go somewhere. And we should probably do it now.
Ten thousand dollars will get you to nine point six percent.
I'd be comfortable with, with that. Because it doesn't sound like nine, nine ninety-nine.
Yeah, I was thinking.
Showing that we're making the effort and it provides. That placeholder in the budget, the placeholder in the minds of our voters year to year and future boards. We don't have to do it all, there's people gonna come and sit in these seats after us. We just have to make a path for them.
Well, as they say on Star Trek, make it so.
I think um. Last year we had very, very positive support from voters as well, and I.
And something like this is something we can highlight. When we go to sell the budget in that, we're being. It's not a lot of things, we're being very responsible and proactive. In providing service and providing for the future. Dealing with the hand we've, we've been dealt with. Both the graces of that hand and the challenges in that hand. In.
Yeah, I think it's a good, I just, I don't think that many people are good at freshen it, I mean, it's ten thousand dollars of a million point, one point six. You know, one point seven. You know, we're not gonna look at that ten thousand, they're gonna be questioning, why are you spending as much on? Salaries or something, you know, before they look at the ten thousand dollars.
Three percent, they might look at thirteen, and they're not gonna look deep enough to say thirteen percent on primary. But we, we have spoken for the last two years I've been on the board. That we've been low on our programming. And also, we had to be very conservative because of, of once in a century. This one social shock. So we have to increase our programming.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it.
And utilities have gone up.
Yeah. That's true too, even like you take your book in the bureau budget, and we're just trying to cover some of the increases there.
And we, we work very hard to get, get grants.
Yeah.
Uh, and we've been successful, and that's why we need. Needed included.
And also. We, that actually should other. Grants, benefits requests come. If you've got that line item there, now you've got that option. Put it right there.
So do you wanna make a motion?
So do you say appropriate make a motion?
I don't know if I need one, I mean, I could do it.
You just do it, okay.
You would be voting on the budget in the August meeting.
Okay. So it's either in there or not.
So if we're having one of the other stuff. You know, all I gotta do is add that in and.
Okay.
And, and just find that right magic number.
Yeah.
Um, something before I forget too, from what I'm hearing, people are comfortable with going over that. The goal, two percent.
Right, so we need to, we need to do a motion on that, right?
No, well, we have a resolution that we need to be signed, so we need to add that to this. There's an actual paper that we have to sign.
Right.
Thinking of this, sorry, the resolution that the board is willing to go over the two percent tax.
But we did that.
Not this year.
You didn't do that this year?
No, we didn't.
Well, you better resolve that.
Well.
We can, we can do that.
Next, next month, I'm just making sure that what I hear from people here is knowing, am I correct, is opposed to over two percent?
We have no way of staying within it.
Yep, okay, obviously, it, it, it takes more than just a majority.
Right.
It doesn't have to be, um. Hello, when you come back, I know the words, but no one says no, it doesn't.
You can do it with five?
You could do it with five.
Five, it's gotta be more than majority, but. It doesn't have to be accurate, it doesn't have to be perfect, we don't have to use paper.
Yeah, that, it's very specific.
It's not a resolution, it's not just a motion, it's. My apologies for not thinking.
Other folks.
I think so.
You know, if Paul can do it now, is everyone okay?
Yeah, I'd rather it gets to you sooner the better, because you know.
So folks would have done it, we started talking. Would have done it in June. It's like, yeah, it's like.
Every year.
Sorry, my fault.
My fault, and I think about that either, and like, sorry.
It's tax levy. And then there are the actual taxes. And the tax levy is a percentage. And one is based, the, the, when you take a percentage, multiply times the. Tax rate. Based on your property value.
Right.
That becomes your taxes. And when we talk about this. We're here to start, that's the tax levy, that's what we get.
Right. Well, that's what we hope to.
We hope to get, yes, that will be what we hope to get, yes.
They don't make us both. But we, wait, they do do better than they used to.
We do, yeah, we do pretty well. I think that we're making. More in terms of past taxes than.
Yes.
We're losing.
Yes, and we never, actually, we never budget for that, so that's what we're saying.
It can change with every city administration, the city administration will change it every year.
It was on my mind, because they did bring it up at the.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, all right, safety committee.
Safety committee. Um, met again on June fourteen. Discussed lots of stuff. Um, but the. Safety committee has a recommendation to the board. And that recommendation. Um, you know, security guards and staff have been discussed and that sort of thing. But the recommendation is to the board is to add another reference librarian. Hmm, to the staff. So that when appropriately staffed, the reference desk has two librarians on the desk.
Does your budget for two thousand twenty-four reflect that?
No.
And a reference librarian is fifty some thousand dollars, fifty something thousand dollars.
Fifty forty, forty-eight, forty-eight something. And benefits with, no, with benefits.
So that would put us another three to four percent up.
Yeah. This is a recommendation, um, for your consideration, I'm not saying that. I mean, it's one of the things, I, I think that. Now that we are finally fully staffed. Food and health services, um, I think we'll find, um. Things are a little, uh, better in those terms, I think we'll, you know, we've got a lot of people. Um. One of the problems. Um, when we look at modifying the interior of the building. Is, you know, we have reference staff now down in the basement, totally separate. You know, from the, from the action in the library. Um. You know, I would design a situation where references. In some proximity to, you know, the reference desk. And they have offices, you know. So at least within shouting distance, but.
Right, so now, this, this recommendation to add the one full-time reference librarian, so there's two people at the desk. Are they both gonna be at the desk here, or where are they gonna? Like, how is that gonna play out?
Well, that was the recommendation, if they actually staff the desk.
With two people every time.
I mean, yeah, maybe you have to make a bigger desk, but I mean.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
That's, that's the recommendation, um.
Our folks kept waiting a long time, that, that's the recommending, uh.
I think the recommendation is more for security purposes.
What, what we discussed, and this comes out of discussions about the fact that. Um. You know, you have to keep your eyes open and, and be aware of what's going on, well. If everybody in the staff is waiting on other people, on the public, it's difficult to. You know, keep your eye on some of the other things that may be developing. And so that's really a lot of that conversation, and that's where that, I think, recommendation comes from. I'm not sure.
There's only one person in the whole reference department, you don't have that.
I mean, if reference offices were right where the toy room is. You know. But. We're not at that stage yet.
So, so the recommendation is based on increased. Security rather than increased service.
But it's kind of. Maybe it's not increased service, but it's, it's in, increasing the level of your service, or are they enhanced service?
And the way I phrase, I might phrase that is. We have. Where our finances are direct through the university. We have run very close to the bone. On meeting the needs of our clients in terms of service. We are running so close to the bone, people constantly engaged in service. We don't have any in the, anybody in the building to. Keep an eye on things, respond to. Incipient questions, situations. Or even if a staff member. Needs fifteen minutes because they're indisposed. We, we're, we're running a very tight ship, and some of that is. Some of the problem may be, we don't have anybody to just look up and look around. Or, or reach, greet somebody or engage them as they come through the door, because everybody is what can sell her.
Well, I think the staff member, the, it speaks more to safety rather than additional service, yes. Um, but safety is also fairly important.
I mean, if you're, I, I think it, I don't think you can separate them. I think, you know, to be able to come in here and feel like you can come in here and you can browse and you can be in the library, and you feel safe as a customer. Or patron, I think that increases service.
We have everybody working head down right now, we need somebody who can be heads up.
And I think we've hired security staff before, perhaps at a lower rate, although I don't know that. Um, but that they're not necessarily then. Attuned to the culture of.
Or even like, or the policies and procedures that we have in place, and to be able to. This way you have somebody who is.
Yeah. They are brought up speed on that, are held to that standard, right, so, and, and I understand how this could be a, uh. A win, win on the, and hit on the, and then has, yeah. A double benefit.
Yes.
It would be.
Right.
Nice to be able to. It is, it does become a, a long term, yeah, I don't think one can look at, oh, this is just a one-time. This is ongoing, significant ongoing expense.
Yeah, I, I think it's, you, you know, I think the staff realizes that, um. The security guard per se, at the rates that we pay. And in the. People that are available for that division. Is really not compatible with the culture that we have here in the lighting. Um, it just doesn't. You know, fit very well.
The challenge is, where do we find four percent? In this year's budget, to do it this, to do it in two thousand twenty-four.
Well, yeah, I, I guess. That's the reality of the situation, I mean, it's something to maybe think about, maybe plan for, I don't know, but.
Then maybe something we need to ponder.
The budgets that we leave this year, or next year, I don't see it as. Terribly realistic at this point, yeah.
May I ask why the. Recommendation was for a reference librarian opposed to a, some other more junior level?
Well, that's what I had suggested, and, um, you know, if you had somebody at maybe the library associate level. Um. You know, that might make. More sense.
It's a lot of responsibility.
Am I, I'm sorry, am I allowed to interject?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, just as a member of the safety committee. Uh, the reason why we recommended a librarian and not a lower junior level employee. Is because the reference librarians are technically the ones in charge of the building when there's, um. Lower staffing levels, and we needed someone who was empowered and equipped. But also. Every conversation that we had regarding security personnel. Created so many other problems with space, because there's so many restrictions with the building. And even recommending a reference librarian. We're not equipped to accommodate two reference librarians at the desk. So that would, the, the cost alone is not just adding another employee, it's, you know. How are you going to reconfigure the entire department to accommodate that, if possible? And the recommendations were not. Vetted for practicality, but as opposed to security personnel, we would prefer to have senior level staff. That are equipped, trained and empowered to take control of the building.
If I understood it correctly, the intent would be to have two. Reference libraries on duty at the same time, so not. I'm not sure I understand why, what the benefit of having two people, both at that same level, at the same time, to address these. Concerns, and so I, I, eyes on, I, I always, it's a good thing, having our eyes on is of course also a good thing. Having these persons understand our practices. Our, I. Always support that. Always support that. I'm just wondering if this is the most efficient way to do it, if it might be.
Of course, we just understand it's a recommendation, I'm gonna mute myself, I thank you for the opportunity to speak on that.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Well, what, what this comes from too is the idea that um, you know. People think that operating by the. Bone, you know, level is not particularly safe. And, and so. You know, additional staff is, is the recommendation, but. As I said, we are going to be at full. Uh staffing levels, we haven't been in, in reference, we had such a turnover in adult services that, you know, we haven't been able to keep enough people there. So that's a change, and maybe that will certainly help the atmosphere a bit. Going forward. But I think the idea is still out there, you don't have enough people, you know, in the building, it doesn't feel safe. That's sort of what we're dealing with. And that's the safety committee report. So far.
Is this to be continued? Great.
Oh, yeah. Well, every couple of weeks, yeah.
So is that something we would bring to the committee? For this safety committee, do they feel that it has to be? A reference librarian, or would they be comfortable or feel? That it was like a library associate or assistant would be. In the, in the reference department, would that be, I mean, we've never had that. Have we ever had a library? I can never remember which goes first, the next down, library associate in reference. Right. I don't know.
Really changes because.
Right.
Of the certification, yes.
It, it has been possible, there's only one. Requirement for the librarian degree, and that's the director. I mean, there's no other actual requirement.
Not even for the head of reference?
Hmm.
Not even for me?
It's pretty slim regulations.
I thought there was um, a cer- certification plus experience.
We want versus what is.
Good practice is to have the head of reference, of course, a librarian, and actually good practice is to have. Many of your elder adult services staff as well. A library associate um. You know, essentially would be able to help out in adult services.
Now, from what I.
But it would be, but solely. The librarian who's in charge of the building.
Yes.
So.
Well.
Still only ever.
Can have, this can't be the one person like. I would wanna be that person's sample. I think from Carolyn's question though, when he asked before. Do I get the impression that you have brought this up to that committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
And their reaction was, no, they wanted a reference person.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's what their recommendation, final recommendation was, after lots of discussion. They felt that was the reason, I don't feel necessarily that. You know, I think a, a library associate maybe who's. There, uh, but if you have a couple people at reference anyway, you don't have a librarian. Right, um but don't forget, you're not saving.
Less than a percent increase in the budget.
You look at, I'm looking at three, three to four percent for reference librarian, but a library associate who's full-time. We're twenty, over three percent.
Right, so is it really?
Your library associate would start at about ten thousand dollars, about thirty seven thousand.
So with benefits, that's bringing us close to three percent.
Yeah.
And within the, the entire um. Structure. Of staffing for the library, is that where, where the need is? Um I know we've talked about the fact that you have a lot on your plate as a director. That perhaps it would be useful to have somebody who can help with the grant writing and such, or project management um.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's true, but on the other hand, it doesn't. Get the person out there with the public. Gets them in here with paperwork like I do. You know, it doesn't, it, it's not a public position. Having like a, somebody and, and another person in the office, yeah, we need that, but. I don't think it answers the need.
Yeah, but it's all, again, it's all different skill set, mindset, and. Because you're focused on what they're doing and here, they, I'm not aware of what's going on in. On a floor and either emergency buildings, day to day, these are focused here.
I don't, you know, I mean. Is there a way that they could have a, a desk out there? Where the action occurs, I, I don't know, I'm just trying to.
I mean, I could sit out there, but I probably wouldn't get anything done otherwise.
Speaking as a career nerd and technocrat. Out in the scrum is not gonna let you get. Focus work done. The fact that you're focusing, now you're not heads up. As to what's going on. When we, we're facing, yes, we need somebody who. We're working so close to the bone, in a, we have in the past, immediate past. Then it's been hard for somebody to be heads up, engaging someone right, right when they come in, right when they walk someplace. We, our staffing levels, or the, or new, as we get sta- stable, at a higher staffing level, we'll permit that. But we're facing competing groups here with the cost of adding that position right now. Versus having to get the public to vote on the budget. We're, we've got competing goods here, and I don't think we're gonna have an answer, we talked about this right now for the next twenty minutes, half hour. We may need to go home and sleep on it, check, and come back at this next month.
Well, and Paul has said that he thinks perhaps fuller staffing that would have, will have an impact as well, and. There hasn't been much of a chance to experience that either. Thanks to ponder.
What?
Thanks to ponder.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, I, I'm passing along. The discussions and what, you know, we're seeing and some of our concerns and.
Thank you.
Anything else moving on? Directors report.
Oh my goodness, all my directions, I already gave it.
Well, pretty much.
Everything was the budget and the retirement. But one thing I didn't say. Is that capital roots has helped and, and repaired. The bicycle fix-it station.
Cool.
And now it's back. I was, they were out there today, I thought, how did you do this, they, they got the thing welded. That it needed to be rewelded, and somebody broke it off. But it's, it works now.
So Paul, we get no retirements, resignations, new hires this month?
No one.
No. Retirements, resignations, new hires this month?
No, no, no.
Stable staffing is a good thing.
I covered, I covered everybody that's new.
That's my header.
I looked it up in the last, oh, we, so we're good. Actually, though, um. Will Ania. I can't remember the name very well, Will, we couldn't call him Will, but.
Does she know?
She started yesterday.
Added staff.
She was in the, she was, she was in the notes last.
Okay.
She had some transition work to do before.
Okay.
Yes.
Right.
But that's it.
But that's.
I'm not thankful. I will pass along that. Um I'm working on getting estimates, you know, for the work we've been talking about. Um I wanna get another estimate on the light lights and um, I'll be getting Chapman's regular updated. But I got an estimate on the windows, all the windows in the east uh. Two hundred and forty-two big ones. Which is, you know, to be expected.
That's a lot of windows.
It's a lot of windows.
A lot of windows and a lot of it's high up and it's.
Basically replacing.
Yeah.
Um and so with a bunch of Anderson windows. So.
Windows are not cheap, I'm going through with my own home.
Yeah, and they got, uh, you know, they got all that put together and sent me the estimate.
Great, thank you.
I also have an estimate for the uh redoing the courtyard. And that's a thirty-three thousand. For that. So I'm, I'm, I'm checking with Upper Hudson and seeing if. You know, as we get closer to deadlines, that they're getting a lot of larger ass. Than going with a smaller one, but um. If they're not. You know, maybe we should go ahead with the larger. Let's see.
Not on tomorrow's agenda, but maybe something will come up.
Yeah.
Oh, this is new business? You wanna ask it in front of everybody? Then now is a good time.
I see there's a election timeline overview, that's included, I think it's part of the uh director's report.
No, presence.
Present.
Same one.
I just see your, your, your header up there, my apologies.
It's okay.
Um. I was wondering if there's a. Other pieces to that, when, when's the nominating period? Uh, close, when does that close? Thirty days before.
Thirty days before September twenty-sixth, when it went being. I don't know, I gotta figure it out. I haven't sent. Well, I don't have any applicants here.
That, that was my next question, and how do we get application forms?
Well, what they have to do is they have to come and see me. And I give them the signature forms that they need. And answer any questions that people have.
Okay, it's not available for a test? It's not, not available for a test?
No, because it's.
No, they have to go.
Could we talk a little bit about why that is? I'm just curious, I'm just saying.
Wha- what's that?
Why?
Why, why do they have it set up that way?
Because we have to get the uh signature information exactly right. Names and addresses. The name of the candidate, legal name, the legal address has to be correct. So I just do it.
Paul, it's talking to another bit.
You know, I don't really think it's a good idea for people just going, bunch of twenty-five signatures and on a piece of paper. I, I, it needs to be a form.
I, 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 I don't question use of a form, using a form is an excellent idea, I just. Curious about. I, I asked the front desk if I could get one, and I was, well, no, I can't, and they couldn't find it, gee, I don't know where these things are. Hmm, I don't know. No one said, oh, go talk, oh, they said, I don't know, which, I was surprised that.
I'm surprised too, that they know.
Well, that's what I was told, and so, I'm just reporting.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that most people have been told, here's this card, go talk to him.
I'm, didn't know, that's not what I heard.
Well, that's what I heard.
Hmm.
Okay, very clearly.
Um and you get the contact information from the candidate too, just in case anything has to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's another thing I need.
And you give instructions. You give instructions to the candidate.
Right. Yeah, I gotta be there. I mean, you have to get twenty-five signatures, but you better get thirty or forty or thirty-five or something, so just in case.
You could have picked one up for somebody else, is that what you're saying? But like, if you, obviously you're looking for yourself, because you already just reran, didn't you?
I, I'm not planning to run for board this time, this session. I just wanna see what the process is.
No, but my question is, you can't, it has to be the candidate themselves who comes in and asks.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so I can't pick that up from somebody else.
No.
No. Again, I find it curious, you know, if, if. If we were told that we as a board are supposed to recruit other people to run for the board. But we're not allowed to hand out the application form, if we were to hand out the application form and it would be filled out incorrectly. It's unfortunate for the other person and they would be mad at, say, if I did that. If I hand this up to somebody, they just do whatever you want. And they come in, they hand it in, and they get all these things thrown out because I gave them bad direction, then. That person would be angry at me.
Yes, and we try to set people up for success.
Well, sometimes setting them up for success and coming in between the hours of. Eight and four might not be convenient.
Yeah, but we're open to, oh, you have to visit for.
Because Paul's, right, yeah, they can't go see the library who's in charge. One person, oh, by the way, this guy's in meetings for a fair bit too, so I come in on, you know, something. It, it just becomes a barrier to running, perhaps.
So what would happen, Paul, if somebody called you up and said that they wanted to run, but they couldn't come in between, you know? When they're working.
To meet them at another time. I mean. I don't see any problem.
So you're willing to stay till seven, or some evening, and somebody gets home from work?
Yeah, I mean, you know.
He's here today.
Test number one.
I know that somebody is interested in, and yeah, I mean, you could make an appointment and do that.
Any, does anyone else have any new old business? No, um. A question also on election, does anyone feel we need to have a, an election review? Election process review again this year? With Lee. That we did last year.
I'm not sure what you're agreeing to.
Did they come and speak to us? Yeah, they came and spoke to us about our responsibilities, what we should be doing, the, the actual process um. I've been chided for using the word etiquette. I, I don't think it's a bad thing.
So on the other hand, we, none of us have changed.
Would if we were talking after the election?
Um, the, 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 to make sure we behave properly before the election. During the election, election day. Afterwards is kind of the. There's a cow has left the barn, the horse has left the barn. So I'm hearing yeses or no's or what?
I don't feel the need, because as I say, I think nobody has changed, but Carolyn felt differently.
I just didn't, I just didn't see the harmony, I guess, what I was, or if they were willing to come.
She's not.
No, she's retired. So. I don't know yet, I just talked to Judy.
A fox stripe on the extra road is never.
But.
Because she organized all the voting and everything.
I know.
Not just for here, but for other libraries that Lee did it for.
So. Changes. Anyway.
Hey, so there's really nobody to do it.
Yeah, go find somebody.
No, I mean, come in and talk with us and have.
Oh.
There's so, maybe, maybe that means more of a reason why we should do it, if it's somebody new, we should. Because if it's somebody new.
Okay.
A fox stripe on the side of the road is never a bad. A fox stripe on the side of the road is never a bad.
What if it's I?
Only real.
I'm number. So nice, but I don't think you could do it.
Hmm.
Would be completely different. Okay. Okay.
I thought about joining because you have to let me know. Somebody have hit me.
We always let them in.
Okay. We, um, sorry, community feedback.
I had one interesting random discussion with a friend. Who was concerned he didn't find enough pro-Trump books. And questioned how many conservative books were available, and to go on, he, he cited, said, I can't get it. When I got on the computer, I found about thirty copies of his various. Within the system.
I've read it, I've listened to a number myself, I can betch them.
They are available. He. You know, he, he questions the role of libraries, but he was also very grateful. When he was unemployed to have the computer access here that allowed him to get another job. So it's got all over the place, but.
So he was okay with the fact that they were in the system and that there was something there.
I explained it, yes, we were limited in what we can stock in any one place, and I don't think he really. He really understood the role of the board. Is. Dealing with the finance, the strategic. Supporting the administrator as opposed to being hands-on. Who knows, like the books, I don't think he ever understood that before.
Um, anyone else have? Community feedback? Um, I do have, you do, okay, no, go ahead.
I just wanted to, uh, say I had a conversation with a couple of people. They thought the adult programming is excellent. They thought there was a great variety of things that would be offered. Here and at Linsenburg. Um. They wish they could attend more. Now, the owl program at the Linsenburg branch was particularly major.
Sounds good.
Kudos to, uh. The person who organized this.
Um. And I have one. I did the Flag Day event over in North Central Italy. And unfortunately, it was just at the end of the program, we were packing up, two gentlemen came by. And we talked about the library a bit. And asked the question, do you ban books? And I, I just, it took me aback. Like, are they not? I didn't know, um, so we went over, uh, the fact that we had just re-in. Revamped, uh, strengthened the intellectual art version of the intellectual freedom. Piece, um, that we do not, libraries do not try to buy in books. Uh, prefer not, don't be in books, uh, their process throughout. Um. That we keep things, they talked about the Patriot Act and whether or not libraries will. Share. Uh, your viewing and reading. Habits and they go, no, that's something that, not unless it's crime and there's a warrant. To get that information, libraries don't do that either. They can't even tell if you've been in the library at all, unless. There's been some reason to legally sell that. Um. But I, I swear, I swear, one of them actually just started crying at the back that the libraries.
Tears of joy or tears of unhappiness?
Uh, joy, absolute joy, um. That the libraries are there and then they say, can we sign up? And I go. These happy gunmen started, I said, just come down, and they lived close. Come down, get your library cards, they were, um. The, I wouldn't say seniors, but they were definitely over individuals. And, and that's a lot, so. I just thought that meant, what you doing, us, we didn't.
I begin to feel that, you know, we're reaching out, we're here, everything, we're reaching out. But sometimes people, no matter what, just keep overlooking us. And I don't know what the answer is.
You keep, you're doing it, you just keep going on, one after one after one after one after one, little by little. You talked to one person who said, um, she had two little ones, one was walking, one was, oh, they're too little. Oh, no, they're not. No, 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 we have story time, we have this, we have that, no, no, they're never too little, ever. That was. Anyways. All right, oh, that's, I think we're, maybe. Feedback, public comment, do we have any, um, public comments at this point?
Nothing.
Thank you. James, you're like one of them. Well. Yeah, who knows? Um, so we're up to date and timed of next meeting, August eighth. By finance. Five thirty for. Regular meeting. And I know we've talked about doing it here or. At the Berg, but the request has been made to do it here again, so we'll do it here. Motion on the floor, and you went to second. I've got two, great, all favor?
I.
I.
Two hands, sorry, that didn't.
So, Paul?
Yes.
Should I turn this off?
What's that?
Should I turn off the computer?
Yeah, I mean. You know, you just press that button there and then you say shut down.
Yes.
Or you.